All right, if... Can you guys hear me? All right, if we are ready, I would like to call the annual budget hearing. Part of the meeting to order, please.
Very good, Doc. Before Mr. Lundberg gets underway, I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to thank him and his staff, James Schilbert, Mary Miller, for the tremendous work they have done on the preparation of the annual budget. It is truly an incredible document, an incredible amount of work, and Mr. Lundberg does an outstanding job of managing and manipulating the resources we have available to prepare for you a high-quality budget that produces a great educational experience for kids, and his expertise is second to none. So, without further ado, $51 million approximately. Paul will let you know how we're gonna divvy it out.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jared. I appreciate it. The only thing I would question the superintendent, I'm using the budget presentation and accounting along with the word "manipulating." I don't like that terminology, but that being said, if you can flip one screen ahead, Jared. Total appropriations budget for 2021 in the general fund is $30,840,000. The capital outlay fund is $3,967,000. The special education fund is $6,950,000. Bond redemption fund is $3,165,000, and food service is $2.8 million. Thinking about the presentation today, as I was going through the day, it has touched a lot by, as everything in our world today has, it touched a lot by the coronavirus. I think it inflated our general fund budget another 1% just with the coronavirus expenditures and revenues that we have coming in, and it greatly affected our 1920, the year-end budget, with some serious under expenditures of $450,000 or so. So, some in a good way, some in a bad way. So, I'll keep going on the revenue side. The next slide shows the revenue for the general fund is balanced at $30,840,000 for a balanced budget. Capital outlay fund has $6,665,000 of projected revenues. That's showing a budget surplus of $2.7 million, which is a planned surplus to build up some cash reserves to pay for addition onto the high school in the next year or two. Special education fund has $7,347,000 of revenues, which shows just under a $400,000 surplus, which is also planned, try to build up our fund balance in the special education fund to get up to the 15% level. We have spent that down over the last few years and had it down to almost little or nothing, and we're trying to get that built back up. Expenditures are very, very difficult to control in that special ed fund. The pension fund is eliminated for next year, zero revenue, zero expenditures, as it has to be by state law, has to be done away with this current, at the end of 1920 school year. Bond redemption fund has $3,165,000 of revenue, balanced with the expenditures. Same with food service, $2,860,000 of revenue, balanced with the expenditures. Now, on the bottom of that page shows the fund balances that we're projecting at the end of the year, and we'll get into more detail on these as we go through the budget presentation. The general fund is estimated to end the year, the previous year, 630, 2020, at just under $6.2 million, and projected to be $6.4 million at the end of next year. You know, generally, we'll underspend our expenditure budget, although I do not inflate those whatsoever. I use actual expenditures all the way through that, but just by attrition, we'll have some reduction in expenditures. That's why I have it inflated by 200,000 from $6.2 to $6.4 million at the end of next year. These are both about 21% of the expenditure level in the general fund, which is about where we've been in the last five or so years. It's been a very comfortable level. As we talked about in the capital outlay fund, we're gonna inflate that by 2.7 million. At the end of the next year, our fund balance will be about $6 million in that fund. Special education fund will go up 400,000 from 700 to 1.1 million, and that 1.1 million will get us very, very close to our target of 15% of our expenditures in the special education fund, which is a good thing. Bond redemption funds stay in level at 810,000, and the food service fund also staying level at about $1.1 million. The detailed budget had a lot of, that was in your packet, had a lot of graphs, and I just pulled those out for our presentation, to kind of quickly go over the 30,000-foot view of our budget. It's a little easier than dealing with 100 pages of numbers that are in the budget. The revenue, total revenue, is $50,877,000, of which $30,840,000 in the general fund, $6,665,000 in the capital outlay fund, $7,347,000 in the special education fund, $3,165,000 in the bond redemption fund, and $2.8 million in the food service fund. Then I have it kind of broken down by the federal, state, and local sources. 51% of it's local of our total revenue of all, throughout all the funds. 51% is local, 42% is state, and just under 5% is federal. So, not a lot of federal funding in the Brandon Valley School District. This has been the case pretty much throughout my career here. The expenditures, total $47,782,000. The general fund comprises 65% of that total expenditure level. Capital outlay fund is 8%, special education fund is 14.5%, bond fund is 6.6%, and the food service fund is 6%. So, it kind of shows you a breakdown of each fund, how much in each fund, majority of it being from the general fund, obviously, 65%, and the special education fund, another 15%. The next slide shows the total salaries in the district. I like to show this slide because it greatly shows that 75% of our total payroll, total payroll, goes directly into the classroom. And then you can see the breakdown of the other payrolls, 6.5% custodial, 3.5% central office, 4% food service, 4.5% transportation, and 6.5% building administration. Now, dealing just specifically with the general fund, $30,840,000. Break that out by the local, state, and federal sources again. You can see by the pie graph at the bottom, local or state sources are just under 61% of our total general fund revenue. Local taxes generate 32% of our revenues in the general fund. The operating transfer from the capital outlay fund of $900,000 is 3% of our total revenues, and then federal revenues for the general fund are 2%. Very small number of our general fund revenues come from federal sources, and that's a little bit higher with the coronavirus grant that's in there of about $350,000 approximately. So, that would be less than 2% without that. Now, the general fund expenditures, I have that broken down by the different categories, instruction, support services, early retirement, and co-curricular. Instruction is 61.4%, support services is 35%, co-curricular is 2.7%, and early retirement payments are just under 1%. Breaking that out further, the general fund by the object level, it's the different categories of expenditures. Salary and benefits comprise the vast majority of the general fund, 86%. You hear us talking about that a lot, probably too much, but that's where the majority of our expenditures in the general fund are in our salaries and benefits. That's done intentionally. We're in a business where everything that we do hinges and contingent upon the people that perform those services for us, so the classroom teacher, the administrators, it's the majority of our expenditures. Now, if you look at the bottom of that, about 4.5% in each category of supplies, purchase services, and utilities comprise the rest of the budget. It always strikes me that our utilities expense is just as much as our total supply and materials purchases, as well as our purchase services. Costs a lot of money to run a building. That's why you heard me talk last year that part of our planning process is to fund the operational costs of our new building coming on, not next year, but the following year, as some of what we do next year, or I guess it's this current year now, is contingent upon that, planning for the operational cost of the new building. Capital outlay fund, revenue of $6,665,000. Majority, almost 100% of that is from local sources. The expenditures are broken down into some major categories, which I titled "facility improvements," 18%. Transportation is 10% of the total expenditure for next year. Instructional programs, 27%. That $1 million, 98, 99% of that instructional is technology. All of our instructional expenditures in the capital outlay, pretty much comprised of technology-related purchases. Textbooks and library books, 5%. Excuse me, debt service, 13%. We have a portion of the intermediate school is paid out of the capital outlay fund, and then we have an operating transfer to the general fund and out of the capital outlay fund that we've been running for, since probably 2008, I believe, 12 years when we received a substantial cut in the general fund. We started that transfer from the capital outlay fund into the general fund of $900,000. It's gone up just a little bit since that time, but pretty much remains stagnant. For a total expenditures of $3,967,000, which is a reduced level than what we normally would run in the capital outlay fund, but the history has shown me, when I prepare a budget like this, when we have a major building project like that, it just, you need to reduce the amount of facility improvements on your other facilities to provide you the ample amount of time to manage the new construction project. So, that is also intentional, that we are down in our facility improvement number, just based on the year. This is the first year of our major building project for the new school. Special education fund shows revenue of $7.3 million and expenditures of $6,950,000. Like I said, it's almost a $400,000 surplus in that fund to try to get up to that 15% fund balance. 75% of the spec ed budget is instructional, and 80% is out-of-district placement, and 10% is co-op. So, the co-op and the out-of-district placement, which majority of the co-op expenditure is, can be considered programmatic in the fact that we ship kids into East Dakota Co-op or TeachWell. In addition to therapy services, physical therapy and occupational therapy is probably half of that $665,000. The other half is programs that we send our kids to, so I look at it as, it's not really out-of-district placements, but similar to an out-of-district placement. Next graph kind of summarizes the 1920 school year, and you have to kind of bear with me here a little bit on the 1920 school year. I try to show you where we are in relationship to budget versus actual, and how that affected the fund balance of the various fund. On the general fund, we had $29.3 million of revenue budgeted. We receipted $29.6 million. If you remember during the year, we had a big influx of bank franchise tax, which pretty much, a lot of our revenues were above budget and some were below budget, but in general, the additional $310,000 can be accounted for with the $300,000 of bank franchise tax that we receipted up and above the budgeted amount. So, remember that $330,000 of revenues, and then under the expenditures, we had $29.6 million of expenditures budget. We had $29,122,000 of expenditures estimated in the year, and we still don't have all of our accounts payable and our classified salary payable for the year-end right now, so some of that is estimated. So, that is, I'm planning on a reduction or under expenditure of $450,000 on the expenditures. So, we're spending $450,000 less than we budgeted, and we took in $330,000 more than we had budgeted on the revenue side. The total of those two is $780,000. As you can see under the budget, we budgeted for a deficit of $273,000. The $780,000 less that budgeted deficit put us into a surplus situation of a little over $500,000. So, $500,000 plus the $5.7 million of fund balance at the end of, or at the beginning of the year would put us at a fund balance of $6.2 million at the end of the year. Everybody halfway kind of following me on that? I know it gets kind of convoluted and stuff that I deal with every day of the week, so it seems easy to me, but I know it's not as easy as it looks. So, $330,000 of additional revenue, $450,000 of unspent expenditures, which were entirely due to coronavirus. I mean, for the most part, were 100% due to coronavirus because we were planning on being 100% expended on our, to our budget with their expenditure levels, so that's where all the under expenditure took place. Capital outlay fund showed a surplus of $866,000 versus a budget of $500,000. That's, can be typical, $400,000 to the good of the budget. It's just a lot of under expenditure, under expending of projects. I know, like, in technology area, we started a program where if the monitors are good on the replacement of PCs, we don't buy the additional monitors, and when you buy as many PCs as we do, $150 on a monitor adds up to a lot of money. So, we're under expended $400,000 there. Special education fund was pretty much right on budget, $184,000 surplus versus a budget of $142,000. Put our estimated fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2020, at $700,000. Pension fund has been eliminated at the end of fiscal year 2020, and the bond redemption fund, pretty much a break-even, as we talked about earlier. Any questions on the end of the year for June 30th, 2020? The next slide shows the, kind of a summary of the next year's budget. We've gone over all the expenditures and revenues. Discharge kind of shows in relationship to the previous year, the increase and decrease. General fund was up 4.2% in expenditures. Capital outlay fund was down 25%. Special education fund was up 8.3%. And we talked about in the preliminary budget, the spec ed fund has been running about an increase of 8%, which makes it even more paramount that we have that fund balance in there to withstand, because I guarantee our revenues are not going to go up 8% a year. This year, the special education revenues did go up 12%, but that is a unique year in the fact that this is a year that they re-based the expenditure levels for the special education fund. That doesn't happen every year. They'll go up just the rate of inflation in future years. The general fund revenues went up 5%. Capital outlay revenues went up 15.7%. Those are based totally on valuations during the year. Bond redemption fund up 7%, and the food service was up just under 10%. Under the highlights, kind of review the fund balance, increasing to almost $6.2 million. That's that, we had a budgeted deficit of $273,000, but we had additional revenue and reduced expenditures, that it ended up being an increase of $500,000 in our revenue. The revenue for next year is up 5%, as I said, $1,526,000. You can see where that $1,526,000 comes from. State aid increase of $500,000, increase in our student enrollment of 160 kids, accounts for $930,000 of that, and all other categories are just under $100,000. So, that's the $1,000, 1.5 million. The expenditures went up 4.2%. You can see the difference there. Our revenues went up 5%, expenditures only went up 4%. There's a difference there of $273,000, which was this past year's deficit, as I showed you before. This year is a balanced budget. Last year was a deficit of $273,000. You can shoot, see where our increased expenditures came from, pretty much staffing, salary increases and additional staffing. 2.2% salary increase, and we did have about a 9% increase in our health insurance benefit this year, so that made up the $750,000 of increased salary and benefits. Additional staff of $425,000. We had some reduction in our federal grants, Title I federal grant. We had a decrease in our early retirement expenses. CARES Act funding, that's our coronavirus additional funding, $265,000 for fiscal year '21, and then various small other increases. Budget concerns, challenges, always enrollment. Enrollment drives everything in the special education fund and the general fund. This is the last year of what I term as a small senior class. I mean, we don't have a ginormous senior class next year, but they are creeping up on us, so we don't have that built-in increase of only 250 kids going out and 350 kids coming in. We're kind of losing that increase, so our enrollments will not have that built-in increase each year in the future. And as we know, state aid increases continue to be uncertain, even though they are mandated by statute, they still are very uncertain. They can change that at the wing of a gavel. The capital outlay fund shows our taxable valuation projected to be $2.4 billion in FY '21. That's a $261 million increase, or 12% of our total valuation budget. It's kind of not funny, or it's kind of makes me smile that probably, I don't know, 50 or 60% of the school districts in the state of South Dakota don't have a $261 million valuation, so our increase is bigger than their entire valuation. Our expenditures went down 1.3 million. As I said before, that's due to the new school that we have coming online, and just the timeframe to manage projects. I always like to decrease the amount of projects that we have going on in expenditures. Special education fund, as we talked about earlier, had an 8% increase in expenditures from the previous year and a 12% increase in revenues. It's a rebasing year for state aid, generated, the increase in revenues was almost $800,000, and our increase in expenditures was only $500,000, so we definitely had some room to build up our fund balance there. You can see our fund balance going from $700,000 to $1.1 million, which is, the $1.1 million would reach our goal of 15% fund balance at the end of FY '21. That's the end of what I have to speak on. Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Paul, real quick, on enrollments, I know we're always kind of looking the best we can. You do a fantastic job of looking at everything. With distance learning, if they enroll in our distance learning platforms, we have to look at though they would sit in our classroom, correct?
No, all of the distance learning is counted as enrollment also.
Great, but as far as space is concerned, right? We can't enroll beyond our space, like, how would, how would we look at that? We couldn't have more in our distance learning than we have space for in our classroom in case they wanted to come into the classroom? I'm just wondering.
Correct.
Yeah, open enrollment, sorry. Sorry, open enrollment.
You're talking about open enrollment?
Correct.
Okay. The long story short, when we talk about distance learning and giving people the ability to opt into distance learning here in the next week or so, and they have a time period, what we will do is administratively, we will manage that situation, whether, whether or not they're able to have new people come into that classroom. You're not going to overextend yourself for semester two so that you don't have space for them in the event that they return. The other thing to remember is that if an individual opts into distance learning, what that's going to do is that's going to provide us to do a little more physical distancing potentially in our onsite classrooms. The most important thing to know and understand is, if a parent opts into distance learning within the Brandon Valley School District, because they are a resident of the Brandon Valley School District, they are in our enrollment count as they are being provided an education, and you are paid for them in accordance to state law.
Thank you.
I have a question, and I think Paul maybe, or either Paul or Jared, but sometimes this time of year, we start to try to get an inkling of what our enrollment looks like for next year relative to new enrollment. You know what I'm asking? So, we've got 350 projected kindergartners come in, we got 300, you know, what do we see from new faces, plus minus, how many we're losing, how many we're gaining? I think a lot of times principals try to keep track. We're probably a little early in that phase, but do we have any idea if we're seeing a net plus, net minus, pretty much even? Do we have any thought?
What I tell you, as you probably know from your previous experiences of an administrator in this district, I watch that closer than I watch my personal family. And as of right now, I am fairly comfortable with our K through 8 projections. High school is a little tougher creature. They, they ship, they move more fluidly than what I'm comfortable with. You know, I want to know exactly what it is today, and that's hard to tell in the high school and stuff, but I am very comfortable with K-8, and I'm fairly comfortable with 9-12, where we're sitting. We'll lose some, and we'll gain some, it just kind of, so I think we're pretty good, pretty spot-on with projection of 160. I'm comfortable with that, though. I guess it's, the superintendent would say that number's going to be a little higher, but I've also learned that superintendents are much more optimistic than finance guys, so we'll see where it ends up. As long as we're on the, at least 160, we'll be in good shape. Other questions the board might have?
Madam Chair, the one, I just wanted to note three specific items, or restate three specific items in terms of our budget. It's just so purposeful. And when I say that, I say, think about your capital outlay budget, and some individuals may look at it and say, $3 million, what's that going to do? Well, we've been talking about a new addition at Brandon Valley High School in the relatively near future, and not putting that burden on our taxpayers in terms of an additional opt-out. And what we have done is we've made a strategy for incremental savings over the course of the next few years to pay for that out of cash. It's just so purposeful, and our strategic plan also clearly outlines a couple of other items that I wanted to note. Special ed reserve funding, strategic plan specifically outlines that we need to have a 15% reserve balance in all funds. Obviously, we aren't quite there yet, but we're taking strides to get there for all those reasons that Mr. Lundberg had previously mentioned. And then the last item that I wanted to note, and it's probably the most complex item for any and all to understand, is that increased bank franchise tax revenue that you have is not really an increased revenue because the state of South Dakota equalizes other revenue, and it's a year behind. So, understand that Mr. Lundberg is going to have to navigate how that other revenue is decreased here in future years. So, when we look at that increase, it's not necessarily just a windfall, for lack of a better phrase. He's going to have to manage that equalization of other revenues as we move forward. And that's all I had to note.
As we talked about when that came in, it's here today, but it's equalized in a future year, so we got to kind of tuck that away in the piggy bank, and then it'll be expended when it gets taken away. Any questions from the public, as it is a public hearing on the budget? I stayed within my 30 minutes.
Did a very wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are they chatty, or is that? Okay, guys. Ready? Ready? All right, let's call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our first meeting of Welcome, everyone, to our first meeting of our new year. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Ollie.
Yes.
Odie. Saxor. Telkot.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Welcome, I've already done that. Welcome, everyone. Now, sorry. Now we will do the swearing in the oath of office. Mr. Lundberg.
Very good. If I can have Ellie and Nick just stand and take care of an oath of office for you two. You, Ellie Saxor, and you, Nick Scott. Ellie being elected to the school board member position, and Nick via three-year position, and Nick being appointed to a one-year position in the Brandon Valley School District, solemnly swear that you will perform and support the laws and the Constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and faithfully perform the duties of the school board membership as they are delineated. Very good, thank you. Congratulations, you two. Right certificate. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lundberg, for the administration of oath of office. At this time, we reorganize, as it is our annual meeting. I would take nominations for board president. Again, I'm seeking nomination for board president.
I nominate Renee Ullman for board president.
I have a nomination for Renee Ullman for board president. Do I have any other nominations? Any other nominations? No other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I would entertain a motion that nominations cease, and you cast a unanimous ballot for Renee Ullman as president.
So moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Telkot. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Member Saxor. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Congratulations, President Ullman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. With that, is there a nomination for vice president, please?
I nominate Member Odie.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, I request that nominations cease, and we cast unanimous ballot for Mr. Odie for vice president. I would entertain a motion in that effect, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, approval of the agenda. I don't believe there are any changes that need to be made tonight, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Conflict of interest disclosure and waiver requests, do we have any? I don't think we have any of those tonight, do we?
Not this evening. Next meeting, we likely will.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion for items 1 through 14 under I, adoption of the regular procedures for 2021 Board of Education meetings.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Two sets of regular meeting minutes from June 8th and June 22nd. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our financial items. Mr. Lundberg.
Very good. The invoice listing for July includes, I had a couple that I pointed out on the first page, Apple Financial Services. It's $402,300. That's the first year of a new four-year lease on the Apple units for nine through 12 students. At the bottom of that page, you'll see a check to Brandon Valley School District self-funding account. That's where the school district self-funds half of the deductible and out-of-pocket maximums for the district. As you remember, to minimize the cost of our increase in health insurance, we raised our deductible from 500 to 750, and our out-of-pocket maximum from 1,000 to 1,500. And then we also increased our self-funding amount from 150,000 to 225,000. That's the check for that increase. Any of the board members have any questions? On page five, we had a payment to Pesca Construction for 468,000 for our monthly drawdown on our new school payments. On page seven, we had several bond payments to US Bank, Intermedia School, Capital Aid Certificates, Robert Bennett Elementary GO Bonds, and Sparta Elementary Bonds payments for a total of $2,82,782. Total bills and claims that I've submitted to you for this month, 3.9 million, $3,905,212. We had pay vouchers of $55,487, and food service bills of $32,581. Any specific questions on the bills?
Just, Paul, just for the people who don't know, the one-to-one purchase was a four-year contract. We were able to sell, I see in the budget, for $450,000. We sold back at the end of the lease, which we kind of were led to believe that that would be the case, and we got a price that is at or above what they told us we would probably get when we first went into this. So in a sense, you're kind of, three years, I mean, your first, the money you sell them back for more than pays for your first year. So it ends up being exactly what they said it would be when we began this process with Apple.
We have received those new MacBooks, 1,500, 1,400, 150 of them. So we have scheduled a meeting for the company that comes out and buys them to come in the next week to buy those. So we'll see what kind of, then they grade them, and I'm sure they're not going to give grades like the Brandon Valley High School teachers give grades. But we'll see what kind of grade we get out of them. That'll be dependent on our payment. Correct. Any other questions?
All right, hearing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lundberg.
Okay, I'll try to go quickly here. Been doing a lot of talking. Cash report for the month of June, we had $28,626,000 coming in the month, 4.2 million of receipts, and 4.5 million of disbursements. Left $28,368,000 of cash at the end of June 2020. And $4,242,000 of receipts was itemized in your board packet. We have $14,203,000 of investments, of which $13,203,000 is United States Treasury bills that we've invested of our bond proceeds, and a $1 million CD. Coronavirus has greatly affected interest rates on us receiving money, too. Last year, if you remember, that $1 million CD was invested at 1.5%, I believe. This year is invested at 0.35%. I actually worked very hard to get that kind of rate. It's amazing, $1 million for an entire year, 0.3%. Payroll and benefits for June was $2,026,000, related benefits and deductions of $1,229,000. The financial reports, revenue expenditures, we pretty much went over those during the budget presentation, so I won't take a lot of time. I did point out that our expenditures in the general fund would be about $450,000 below budget, whereas all the way through up until March, we were saying we're going to be 100% budget, expended on our budget. These are all related to the virus. Utilities were underspent by $100,000. Substitute teachers were underspent by $50,000. Fuel expenditures were underspent by $75,000. Activity trips and travel were underspent by $60,000. And general district-wide supplies were underspent by $160,000, which accounted for I did, under the food service statement, I did want to point out that we are ending the year at about $40,000 net profit. If you look at the actual financial statement, the only reason that was attainable is due to our high, high level of federal reimbursements that we received. We had a budget of $600,000 and received 1.1 million. It just, they reimbursed us at a very high rate there, kind of, let's call it a coronavirus rate. Our actual sales were down several hundred thousand dollars, but that reimbursement rate allowed us to maintain that fund in a positive category.
Mr. Lundberg, if I may, that will also allow us to continue our practice of the elimination of the price for a reduced meal for families that qualify for reduced meals. We've taken great pride over the course of the last few years in our ability to eliminate that cost to families that qualify for reduced meals, and we will be able to continue that again for the 2021 school year. So just an item to note on that.
Very good. Second to last, our capital projects financial statement. We have 2.5 million expended of our total budget, 18.7 million. And then the trust and agency account held $148,000 of monies that we hold for other groups and various entities. Any questions?
Paul, and you said utilities came in approximately $100,000 less. That sounds like a lot, but percentage-wise, that's just a fraction.
It is a small amount, and even in totality, $450,000 is 1.5% of our total budget. But still, it adds up, you know, $100,000 utilities, $50,000 of substitute teacher expenses. All of a sudden, we end up with just about a half a million dollars. So the virus had a great effect on our expenditure levels, that is for sure.
Yeah.
But percentage-wise, it is very small.
Right. So it sounds like a lot of money, but I don't, I mean, I think the perception is that we didn't come out of this just banging with a lot of extra funds. Because we were going to be a little overspent with the way the year was going.
Exactly. Yeah. That is correct.
I got it at about 7.5% or so of the utility budget. Bad math. Paul will correct me tomorrow, and he'll say it was 7.82%, but that's okay. I'll deal with that tomorrow.
Yeah, we have you enrolled in class this semester. Any other questions for Mr. Lundberg tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to our community input, and we do have some tonight. Superintendent Larson, did you want to direct how this should go for me, please?
Sure. Madam Chair, we have three individuals that have asked to address the board this evening in community input. In the order in which they were received, I would invite them to the podium. Ms. Amy Kelly, first, you'll need to push the Talk button. The red light should come on the speaker, and that's when you know you're live.
All right. Yeah, I got it. So for those of you that don't know me, my name is Amy Kelly. I'm a Brandon Valley High School graduate, and I have been a physician for over 15 years. I currently have three children in the district. I have a second grader at Fred Assam Elementary, and I have two children entering seventh grade at the middle school. I would quickly like to summarize the data that I've previously given to all the board members, as I sent a letter to you about a week, week and a half ago, and end by summarizing why myself and the other doctors and physicians and nurse practitioners that signed my letter from the district would ask that face coverings should be required this school year for the students. The American Academy of Pediatrics and Harvard guidelines that I gave you both emphasize mask-wearing in schools, particularly for high school and middle school. Two leading journal articles that I gave you from the Journal of American, of the American Medical Society and the Lancet Journal, those are both medical journals that are trusted and used by physicians around the world. The first article from JAMA showed that face shields alone, with no masks, provide anywhere from 68 to 96% efficacy against inhaling coronavirus. Now, of note, we should not apply any burden of 100% efficacy for any containment or reduction policy, because this is impossible to achieve, and to be honest, it is not necessary to contain the coronavirus. The Lancet Journal that I sent you is a systemic review and meta-analysis of 172 studies that showed physical distancing of one meter decreases the risk of getting coronavirus by 82%. And that masks reduce your exposure by 85%. Given that physical distancing is difficult at best in schools, masks are the best and most realistic way to reduce the risk to our students, our teachers, and our staff. The next article I gave you is a study done by Texas A&amp;M, and concludes by stating, "Our results clearly show that airborne transmission via respiratory aerosols represents the dominant route for spread of COVID-19. We calculated that over 66,000 infections were prevented by using a face mask in a little over a month in New York City. We conclude that wearing a face mask in public corresponds to the most effective means to prevent human transmission of this virus." The next study that I gave you demonstrates that if people wear masks in public, it's twice as effective at reducing the R number. Now, the R number, for those of you that don't know, is the number of people that one infected person goes on to infect. So you want the R number to be below one. And this study showed that the R number is reduced, is, it's twice as effective at reducing the R number if everyone is wearing masks, not just symptomatic people. Importantly, in this study, it actually showed that even homemade masks are really important and can do this as well. The last study that I mentioned in there shows that 80% mask usage, so if you have a population, 80% of them are wearing masks, it will reduce, even if they're using masks that are homemade, it only reduce respiratory droplets by 50%, which is not even a very good homemade mask. It may reduce deaths by 25 to 65%, depending on the prevalence that is in that community. So I also sent you a lot of other information. I sent you information about how this virus and what we know about it has changed over time, which is why the CDC originally did not recommend masks, but now they are. It is because we have gained more knowledge over time of this virus. I sent you information about how to deal with mask anxiety, as well as news stories involving several cases in different states. One in which a hairdresser, two hairdressers that owned a salon both had coronavirus. They saw 140 clients before they were diagnosed with coronavirus. None, zero of their clients got coronavirus because they required masks in their salon. They wore a mask, their clients wore a mask. In contrast, in the two-hour choir practice in Michigan, one person infected 80 people, three of which have since died. That shows us masks work. Since I sent my letter and spoke to Superintendent Dr. Larson, I have read multiple studies from around the world, which do show transmission rates are low in children under 10. I will emphasize children under 10. Most of these studies show that teenagers and children above 12 are just as likely to spread this virus and be ill as adults. So most of these studies are in children under 10, so elementary-age children. But it's important to note that most of these studies from other countries use mitigation strategies like masks, social distancing, and very, very small class sizes. Additionally, the prevalence of COVID-19 in these countries- Therefore, I think you cannot assume that opening schools without those specific mitigation strategies in place will result in those same low transmission rates here. The UK, which schools, which their schools are much more similar to ours, and their rates of COVID are more similar to ours, opened their schools on June 1st. Since they, they have had outbreaks in the first two weeks of school, outbreaks in the UK increased by 70% in the first two weeks of school. As concerned physicians and healthcare workers serving the people of Sioux Falls and the Brandon area, myself and my colleagues urge you to mandate masks and/or face coverings in our public schools during this global pandemic. Exemptions to wearing masks for children with individualized education plans or with medical conditions that would prohibit safe and effective use of masks should be handled on a case-by-case basis. My pediatric colleagues have assured me, and studies have shown, that face coverings do not decrease oxygen levels and are safe for almost everyone who has the ability to remove their face covering themselves. Although some of our youngest, our preschool and kindergarten students, may initially be unable to wear masks the full school day, with time and proper modeling, many of these young students will be able to properly wear masks when social distancing is not possible. At a population level, masks are undeniably useful at reducing cases of COVID-19. Mask usage is most effective when all persons wear them, and families that choose not to wear masks endanger others by risking asymptomatic or presymptomatic spread of the virus. While there may be a debate about how effective face coverings are, there is no debate that they are in fact effective. Please do not let perfect be the enemy of good. Mandating masks in our schools can, number one, prevent the spread of viral infection that will compromise the health of children, their families, and school employees; number two, reduce outbreaks that will threaten school or classroom closure; number three, prevent unnecessary time off for parents, staff, and teachers; and four, save healthcare resources which will be tasked with testing and clearing students for returning to school. Both of my middle schoolers do not believe their peers will wear masks unless it is required, just like they say their friends would not do homework if it was optional. The same Lancet article that I mentioned earlier found that while 80% of mask use, while a population that is 80%, 80% of them are wearing masks, is actually as effective as a lockdown to reduce the spread of the virus, if mask use is less than 30%, it doesn't work. It's almost like not wearing masks at all. So if face coverings are not mandatory, I do not think we will be able to achieve the 80% that is needed to control this virus in our schools. I would like you to just think about how many people you see wearing masks in the grocery store where it is optional. I don't think any of us would shit say that it is anywhere close to 80%. We appreciate the hard work of our educators and administrators. We value the guidance and commitment of our school board members to making our schools safe, accessible, and academically robust. We hope that you will follow the guidance of the American Medical, or the American Academy of Pediatrics, and make masks or other face coverings such as face shields required for students and faculty in our schools. Lastly, I would say this virus is theoretical to most people in the Brandon district. Frankly, we don't know enough about it, and it's very unpredictable in regards to who is asymptomatic and who gets seriously ill. In New York, the only profession that had people, more people die than healthcare workers and first responders were teachers. I am sure that none of our teachers want to attend the funeral of a student, and I'm equally sure that none of the students want to attend the funeral of their teacher. As a physician, I have lost patience over my career, and each time, I am haunted by what ifs. Could I have done something different to change the outcome? When the first teacher, student, or staff in the Brandon districts gets seriously ill, or God forbid, dies, I don't want any of you to be haunted by that. I want you to be able to look at yourselves in the mirror and know that you did everything you could to keep your community safe. Please require face masks or shields for students, staff, and teachers this fall. Thank you.
Next to the podium, we have Brianna Baker.
I'm not a doctor, but I am a parent to kids in elementary school. And I also have parents that are included in this, probably like 30 to 40 parents. I and some other parents here in Brandon have concerns about masks being required when school resumes for our children and the staff. We understand we are living in uncertain times, and because of this, we need research, alternative ideas to how schooling looks this coming year. However, we are concerned that in an effort to reduce the spread of COVID-19, we will inadvertently put our children at risk of other physical and emotional consequences. Before I get into the mask session as well, we want to say we also have concerns about the excessive sanitizing and the overuse of hand sanitizers, in which the CDC is recommending that cleaners use such as Lysol and bleach, and hand sanitizers such as Germitx are all known to be carcinogenic. We are concerned about the effects that will have on our children, the staff, and also their immune systems when used excessively. Also, the overuse of hand sanitizers can lead to the drying, cracking of hands, which is the problem, which is a problem itself. Consider hand washing when possible, and consider different cleaning products, please. Some of the questions that we have, have that are not addressed in studies we found include, so does the mask itself become a breeding ground for bacteria and viruses in turn causing more transmission and an increase in illness, and what are the dangers of this? Does the mask interfere with communication, relationships, interaction with people? How do the mask pollute the environment if you choose to wear one that you, that you re, or you, or new surgical mask, because some people might choose that? Should masks be disposed in a hazard waste container if it is, if it does trap bacteria and viruses? Does mask, does wearing a mask when interacting with a child have any short and long-term emotional consequences? Does the child's inability to see facial expressions in adults and other children impact their ability to develop an awareness of facial expression and future communications and relationships, and also affect their learning? Does the mask interfere with communication leading to behavioral issues? Does wearing a mask all day have a negative impact on vision, are the, especially the face shields, because they're really shiny if you ever wore one? Are the face masks uncomfortable for the children, leading to distraction and constant touching of the face? Will the mask cause contact dermatitis or eczema in those prone to skin irritation? Will the fogging up of glasses by those wearing glasses cause the person to constantly touch their face or remove their glasses, impacting their ability to see and learn increase, and increase the likelihood of spreading disease? I know when I go into the grocery store and I'm wearing a mask with the glasses, they fog up, so I have to take them off and re-put them back on. And I know my kid would too. If the mask effective, if the mask affect communication, will people get closer to understand what is being said? Will the kids be able to hear them? Because when I'm talking to people who is wearing masks, when I'm, even when I'm talking to them, I use their lips to read, so will they be able to understand them? Will wearing masks create anxiety and fear in children? If they do, will the anxiety and fear last into adulthood? What will the effects be on children with sensory disorders? I know she mentioned not to have that, but ADHD, asthma, et cetera, autism, et cetera. If masks are mandatory, do these masks make the wearer breathe in more carbon dioxide and make children feel lightheaded? I know, and I don't need studies to tell me that when I walk around Costco wearing my mask, that I can't breathe, and I get really lightheaded, and I can't talk to my family who's there, and I don't have any health problems. Why would we mandate masks to children when this virus is rarely affecting children? How will the teachers keep the kids from using their mask to blow their nose, from constantly readjusting them, from sharing masks, keeping them on their face, helping students fix their mask before, well, the elementary kids, before and after drinking or eating, understanding the children while they're wearing their masks? I think it will cause more, more problems than good, because they're, whenever I wear a mask, I touch my face even more than what I do normally, and my kids do too. And what hap, um, okay. First, let's review the common types of masks. From the University of Iowa Healthcare Regarding N95 Masks, People Chose to Wear Those. The N95 mask protects the person using it and is meant for a contaminated environment because it was designed for a contaminated environment. It doesn't filter what the person is breathing out, because I see people wearing those in stores, so it helps them and not others around them. In the article, it states with substantial evidence that, and I can provide you these articles as well, because I didn't have, I didn't have time to send you them before. In that article, it stated that the N95 is an exhalation valve protects the person wearing the mask, but not the subject being evaluated operator. Surgical masks are meant to be used in a sterile environment to protect individuals from splashes or particles. When they are in a sterile environment with negative pressure, the mask offers protection from large particles and microbes in the air. If a healthcare professional were to go into a contaminated room, once they leave that room, it is considered contaminated, and the mask must be thrown away. When people are using surgical masks in public, they are immediately contaminated. Using the mask over and over means more and more particles are being trapped in the mask, increasing their risk of transmission more than if you weren't wearing one at all. According to the FDA, if worn properly, a surgical mask is meant to help block large particles, droplets, flashes, sprays, or splatter that may, that may contain germs, viruses, and bacteria, keeping it from reaching your mouth. And no, surgical masks may help reduce exposure of your saliva and respiratory secretions to others. While a surgical mask may be effective in blocking splashes and large particle droplets, a face mask by design does not filter or block very small particles in the air that can be transmitted by coughs, sneezes, or certain medical procedures, like the COVID is a lot smaller than influenza particles, and those can still go through regular surgical masks. Surgical masks also do not provide completion, complete protection from germs and other contaminants because of the loose fit between the surface of the mask and your face. If used, the surgical mask should be thrown away frequently because the masks become contaminated due to the exposure of people changing, of exposure of the people changing constantly. The CDC is recommending the use of cloth masks to slow the spread, because we know the spread is still inevitable. They say the cloth mask can help slow the spread, however, there's evidence that shows cloth masks can actually increase the rate of infection. According to the study from BMJ Journals called a cluster ramblinized trial of cloth masks compared with medical masks in healthcare workers, they found that there was a 97% transmission of particles in the cloth mask group and an increase of infection. The article states that moisture retention, reuse of cloth masks, and poor filtration may result in an increased risk of infection. These infections include confirmed viral infection, respiratory illness, influenza-like illness, rhinoviruses. Also, according to OSHA, cloth masks, cloth face coverings will not protect the wearer against airborne transmission infections. Agents due to loose fit and lack of seal or inadequate, in, wow, I can't talk, in aquatic filtration, and are not appropriate substitutions for PPE such as respirators. According to FDA, face masks, non-surgical masks may provide protection from fluids or may not filter particles. Need to protect against pathogens such as viruses. They are not for surgical use and are not considered personal protective equipment. The CDC says that surgical masks do not provide filtration to the wearer with a reliable level of protection from inhaling smaller airborne particles and is not considered respiratory infection. If needed, I can include more studies on why not to mandate masks, studies regarding masks with influenza, and how COVID particles, which are smaller than influenza, can go through cloth masks by the time, but my time is here is probably way past, sorry. Let's remember how Dr. Birx and Dr. Nogozie Zike said how they are classifying COVID deaths. You can die from another cause and still be listed as a COVID-19 death if you test positive, which skews their death rate results to scare people. Can provide them that discussion if I need to as well, because I did not send an email prior. My last question is, what will happen if we send our children to school without masks since there is not a statewide order to mandate them from our governor, Kristi Noem, but yet your, the school would mandate them? Are you willing to turn away our children from education because of a mask? Remember, not everyone follows medicine doctors. I have a holistic doctor, and I am recommended not to wear a mask. In our constitution, we are, we are free to do what we want, and I don't know why I have to follow another person's orders. We are asking for all of you on the school board to vote against mandatory masks for our children and staff, and instead, let it be a personal decision for both the students and the staff at school. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to respond that the studies, most of the studies that I think she is quoting from, from the British Medical Journal, which is what BMG stands for, just so you know, those studies are actually studies that are about providing appropriate PPE for healthcare workers. No one is expecting a school to be like a hospital. I wear a papper when I deliver women who have COVID-19, which looks like a little space suit. And a healthcare setting is completely different than school settings. You're dealing with people who are actively sick and have very high viral loads. That hopefully will not happen in schools, because hopefully, sick children will not be there, but there will still be asymptomatic and presymptomatic children there. You do not have to have PPE for a healthcare setting in a school. Perfect should not be the enemy of good.
I appreciate, I think we just need to respect both sources that you both brought, because there's going to be differences in both sources and number, perspective and analysis. We're all going to find differences in the studies brought, so I just ask for respect for both.
I, I am totally agree with you. I think the, the issue is, when you look at studies, is you have to know how to read them, and you have to look at the details. You can't compare apples and oranges.
And I read through all of yours, and all the details, which I've also been trained in, so I'm just going to ask for respect in both.
Okay. Thank you.
Next on the list, in order which we received, Ashley Briggs.
So my name is Ashley Briggs. I am a physician at Stanford. I'm an OB-GYN. I've been practicing at Sanford Health for 15 years. I am a graduate of Brandon High School, 1992, so kind of a long time ago. I do have two children also in Brandon. One is going to be a sophomore, one's going to be a sixth grader, and I appreciate your time tonight. So, so I just wanted to speak also on the policy and the recommendations that the board is going to be having on the return to school for the kids. So the American Academy of Pediatrics states that schools are fundamental to child and adolescent development and well-being. The AAP strongly advocates that the policy considerations for the coming school year should start with the goal of having students physically present in school. No single action or set of actions will completely eliminate the risk for COVID-19 transmission, but the AAP recommends implementation of several coordinated interventions that can greatly reduce the risk. These can include physical distancing, proper hand hygiene, and face coverings for elementary and secondary schools, when harms do not outweigh the benefits. Some students and staff may, may not feel safe returning to school buildings because of certain medical conditions. Those conditions could include age over 60, or if they have underlying health conditions. Students may also have underlying health conditions, and when I reviewed the South Dakota Department of Health's website, currently, 816 children aged 0 to 19 in South Dakota have tested positive for COVID-19. Children are less likely to develop severe illness due to COVID-19, but due to these underlying health conditions within South Dakota, they may again become more severe illness. they may again, um, become more severely ill due to the COVID-19. According to the, um, South Dakota Department of Health, certain conditions, again, that our children in South Dakota have, um, that could be putting them at higher risk include obesity. So from 2016, um, age five to 19, 31.7% of our children in South Dakota were considered overweight or obese. Um, in South Dakota, asthma was at 7.5% of our population. Our high school students, um, 17% used e-cigarettes and South Dakota ranked sixth in the nation for type 1 diabetes. The more medical conditions, um, our students have, the more, again, um, risk they have for COVID-19. As Brandon Valley looks to implement COVID-19 safety measures into the school district, this falls into line with the Link's Way, which focuses on five traits: respectful, kind, responsible, safe and being active learners. Wearing a mask is an act of being respectful to your neighbor because you could be an asymptomatic carrier and by wearing a mask, you're keeping them safe. You're helping to keep your school open so all of your classmates can continue to be active learners. Wearing a mask is a responsible behavior students can do and by doing this, hopefully their parents and community members will follow this behavior. Feasibility, um, concerns have been raised about making masks mandatory and these have obviously been encountered with other school districts. Some of the feasibility concerns that have been brought up include if a student or staff, parent or guardian refuses to wear a mask. As I did research, um, other districts have also encountered this concern and it appeared that they had consulted with their attorneys. What their attorneys had, um, recommended to the districts was that, um, the mandatory mask fell under the dress code. I reviewed the BVH dress code and the dress code said in the entrance of cleanliness, decency and good taste, restrictions on dress grooming are necessary when they create a danger to students' health and safety, interfere with the education process or create a disruptive, a disruption in school. Um, another concern was increased disruptive behaviors related to special education students such as autism, ADHD or ODD. Um, there are a lot of materials that are out there that talk about helping students with autism spectrum disorders manage masks, talking about finding a material that they're very comfortable with, demonstrating behaviors, using, um, pictures. Um, there are some handouts that I have included and I will distribute to you that talk about helping them with that, um, kind of learned behavior. Um, another was, um, providing common masks is likely to promote the sharing or misplacing a mask. So masks, um, some of the masks that can be purchased have a spot to write their name in permanent marker. Others that I found have a label maker that can print a fabric. Um, with their name on it, you can iron it in. So there's lots of creative ways to label these masks so that they aren't losing their specific mask. Another question brought up was school activities or functions that are not conducive to mask wearing. So the CDC has published, um, considerations for youth sports and I feel that if the district is following that CDC document as they've been doing this summer, as they've reimplemented the youth activities, that really making masks mandatory in the school is separate from following these guidelines as they're reimplementing the, um, the activities within the sports. It was brought up, um, by our previous member, the social emotional wellbeing of kids. Obviously, that is something we want the kids to be able to feel emotionally safe in school and be able to, to learn. There are some, um, again, references the CDC has from the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. There are webinars that the teachers can take that will help both the, the teachers and the students, um, focus on getting back into school. Um, there were handouts, again, webinars, all sorts of great resources that I found that linked off of the CDC website. Promotion of increased face touching. Um, the risk of touching your face is still there, but if we stop those asymptomatic spreaders, uh, we will make a significant impact on the spread and hopefully also decrease that rate of the COVID, um, infection. And then the cost was also brought up. So I did reach out to Sanford because we have a volunteer, um, group there where, um, both masks, cloth masks were donated and the volunteers also made some masks. And so they had 26,000 cloth masks that were actually donated to Sanford. Um, so I do feel obviously the Sioux Falls community helped with that, but probably the Brandon community also helped. And I think that we could, um, ask again for donation of cloth masks. Um, so that I think could be. The other thing was Sioux Falls published, um, the school board obviously published their preliminary, um, guidance on re-entry into school and they listed, um, a kind of a paragraph on federal and state grants, um, for COVID. So we could probably get some funding towards the cost of these things that would be necessary, necessary to implement masks or face shields. So, um, as, um, Dr. Kelly had mentioned, one prediction model said that 80 to 90% of students, people, teachers, staff would need to wear a mask to reduce the risk of COVID spread. Um, and, um, I think to be mandatory, we would, we would need to make it mandatory to be able to reach that 80 to 90%. I think just a recommendation, um, I don't think we would be able to reach that 80 to 90%. I know when I'm out in the community, I look around, I don't see people wearing masks. My daughter looks on social media, her friends are not wearing masks. Um, and, um, I, I do feel again, in order to, to reach that, that standard of 80 to 90%, uh, we need to make it mandatory. So, um, I appreciate your time. Um, thank you very much.
For your time.
With that, um, takes us to our general business section. Administration reports, um, Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Mr. Lundberg, do you have anything to start? I do have a few things for the board here this evening. Want to provide a quick update on our elementary school construction and where we're currently at. Uh, footing, uh, foundation walls and masonry is in progress. If you happen to drive by, you can see that the masons are working on what would be the east side of, uh, that school facility. Those masonry walls are ultimately walls that will be connecting, uh, into the gymnasium. So, uh, the gymnasium, the pre-cast panels, we anticipate the pre-cast panels, um, arriving sometime in August and, uh, whatnot. But that's, uh, that's a, just a quick, high-level overview of where the, um, construction, uh, is at in terms of our, um, elementary school on 41st Street and Sparta. Uh, it's important to note that our naming facilities will, uh, committee will get underway and, uh, finalize that name here, uh, this summer. We will have an elementary boundary line, uh, committee get together and basically take a look at, um, the, um, recommended change to our boundaries, uh, for our, for, with bringing our new elementary school on in the fall of, uh, 21. It's important to note that, um, the boundaries are going to be relatively established when they come to that committee. I just want to have some insight from them. It's just a matter of when you're putting an elementary school in a specific location, there's only so many changes and tweaks you can make when managing that student population. So, um, that, uh, that committee will, uh, do that work here this fall. We will be under construction all of this year and we are estimating opening fall of 2021. Uh, it is relevant to note, um, later in your agenda, you'll have approval of, uh, Principal Tanya Palmer being, uh, transferred and assigned to, uh, that school building. So, uh, congratulations to Principal Palmer. Uh, Summer 2020 Return to School Plan. Uh, I would encourage all of our, uh, parents, patrons and community to closely monitor our COVID-19 information website. We've worked very hard to provide that as a central communication hub so that individuals know where we are at in our process and which phase we're in. Would note Phase 1 began June 1st. We made that announcement in, uh, in the end of May. Phase 1 was, is the month of June. Phase 2 is the month of July. And then ultimately, um, Phase 3 will be the month of August. The formalized announcement will occur on July 17th. So would encourage everyone to continue to mon- monitor that communication hub in terms of, uh, specific information relating to COVID-19, our ability to opt into distance learning, all of that information. Our return to learn plan, um, will be provided there as well. So just a really nice, uh, centralized hub for all things COVID, um, related. I want to note, uh, I am a member of the, um, High School Activities Association, South Dakota High School Activities Association, Return to Play Task Force. Uh, we have had two meetings on that. Uh, we have a third meeting scheduled for early afternoon on, uh, Friday, July 17th. It's really been, uh, our, um, message to the High School Activities Association to focus on process and protocol when we were talking about, um, an individual daily health screening process and then also a protocol for, um, how to, um, not play a game or how to forfeit a game when any of those things are necessary. So currently working through that process. Uh, it's also relevant to note that, um, there's a study regarding, uh, band and choir that we anticipate seeing here in the very near future. It was originally or tentatively scheduled to come out last week. I believe it was delayed, so hopefully we have that information as we move forward uh, because that is in, um, at this point in time, a potential area of concern. We have begun our summer programming for, uh, for marching band, but they're staying in those small groups outside as appropriate and some of those things. Um, so more information to come regarding, um, high school activities uh, here in the, the near future. Uh, Summer Lunch Program Update. Want to just note, we maintain weekly distribution of our meals. That occurred every Tuesday. Uh, our, our, uh, child nutrition program, uh, dis- uh, distributed approximately 1,500 meals weekly. Um, the last day of that, uh, distribution is Tuesday, July 21st. So, um, if you have anyone that has been attending and is, um, and is wondering what's going on, why they aren't there on the 28th, the 21st is the last day for meal distribution. And again, as I previously noted, uh, when we were talking through, uh, the financials, uh, the elimination of the reduced meal is able to be continued for the 2020-21 school year. And as you guys can recall, uh, the revenue that we garner from our Summer Lunch Program, we reinvest into those families that are in most need by the, through the elimination of the reduced, uh, the reduced fee. The Associated School Boards and School Administrators of South Dakota will hold a joint virtual conference, uh, this fall. It's on August 6th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Uh, Devin Hughes and the Orange Frog, uh, is the keynote speaker. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, Devin Hughes and the Orange Frog in general is phenomenal stuff. Actually, last year, we utilized, um, we utilized, uh, the Orange Frog with our administrative council. Um, the Reader's Digest version is, it's all based on the happiness advantage and individuals that, um, meditate, uh, individuals that exercise, individuals that eat right and individuals that journal positive things have positive thoughts and they lift themselves. Uh, the, ultimately, the happier you are, the better work you get done. So, um, board members, I would strongly encourage you to consider, uh, registering for that, uh, conference if you are available to do so on, uh, the August, on the August 6th date. Bus passes are currently for sale. The, the, the sale date, um, range is from July 6th to July 31st. We've communicated that out to our parents via phone call as well as email message. I will tell you, we are strongly encouraging parents and guardians to use other alternatives of transportation for the purpose of, um, trying to have a little bit of space. The bottom line is social distancing or physical distancing on a school bus is basically impossible. Uh, previously, we evaluated the potential to utilize, um, the, uh, recommendations or considerations provided by the CDC and you're talking about a school bus, um, having 12 kids on it if you abide by the, those, uh, recommendations or considerations, which is not feasible. Uh, so what we have done is we are making the, um, we are making the service available, although strongly encouraging parents to find alternative or other methods of, uh, of transportation for their students for the 2021 school year. Would note, there are some, uh, some tweaks and/or changes that have been communicated in multiple ways, um, over the course of the last six months in terms of transportation. And that is number one, no in-district elementary open enrollment transportation eligibility. So I'll use, uh, lay terms and tell you, if I live in the Robert Bennett Elementary Boundary and I open enroll to Valley Springs, you are not eligible for transportation services. That was a significant issue for, for our transportation department to manage. They had about 60 some odd kiddos that were in that situation. And what would happen is you would have to transfer them off of multiple buses to get them to their building and routing was an issue and timing was an issue and it created substantial issues, um, for the masses in terms of our routing and scheduling. So no in-district elementary open enrollment transportation eligibility. Uh, in addition to our, um, various communications in the past, uh, months, um, we are informing people of that when they apply for in-district open enrollment now, letting them know that. As well as like the kindergarten kiddos and pre, uh, pre-K kiddos or junior kindergarteners that have, uh, applied for in-district open enrollment, we are informing them of that upfront. A couple of school calendar items I want to note. August 12th, new staff in-service. August 13th, uh, later in this meeting, we're going to have, um, approval of an amendment on our calendar and all that does is flips in-service and workshop on August 13th. Previously, it was workshop and then in-service, um, is a scheduling item, I believe for, uh, speaker, professional development. But now that we are, uh, making our in-service, um, as we come back, all distance learning reflection and, uh, distance learning and COVID response and conversation and professional development, we're going to flip that so it's in-service workshop on all of those days. Very, very important for you as a board to note that, um, something that we have taken great pride and enjoyed, uh, the last three years has been an all-staff welcome back. Uh, that's when we bring in all categories of employees, and, uh, provide them with, uh, a message for the upcoming school year as well as providing them with a meal. Think it's, uh, incredibly impactful for staff morale and, uh, as we work to provide that positive work environment, uh, that, that everyone knows that they're appreciated and valued. Um, once we're done with our, our, our assembly, Mr. Thorson and the other administration, along with Mr. Schleckaway, they serve lunch to our, our staff. Uh, and that's been, that's been a powerful message as we've considered, um, their service to our staff and whatnot. However, given the current circumstances in which we are living, we will do a virtual all-staff welcome back and ask folks to remain, remain in their buildings. And then in addition to that, we're going to offer a gourmet box lunch that's going to be created by our Child Nutrition Services. Um, I will tell you, I know there's probably a few things when you think gourmet and box lunch don't go together and then you add in-school lunch, it's like, huh, you're trying to figure out how that works. But I'm going to tell you, one of the true joys that I have in my leadership roles to work with outstanding staff, outstanding administration. And when I laid this challenge on Director Anderson, uh, her eyes lit up and she automatically had multiple ideas and, um, really the best idea was, we're going to give them one of those dessert bars. You know, a really big one, not just a cookie. Uh, so I found that, uh, to be, um, very positive in terms of what Director Anderson thinks she can put together for our staff as we welcome them back and demonstrate our appreciation for the valuable work that they do. Uh, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have at this point.
Thank you Superintendent Larson for the update. Mr. Lundberg, anything? Nope. Mr. Schleckaway?
No. All right, there we go, got it. Uh, first of all, it's great to see all of you. Uh, it's been a while, so I'm certainly glad, uh, to be in front of you. I want to start by just saying a couple of quick thank yous. Um, some of the middle school, high school staff and teachers have, um, volunteered some time this summer, along with our tech department on creating some neat things that we're going to roll out in the coming weeks. Um, and it's everyone in our tech department, um, that deserves a big kudos because they see me come and they're like, what's he coming with now? And, um, we certainly took, uh, the input from our parents and looked for opportunities for growth and I think we have some really neat things that we're going to be able to roll out, uh, in the coming weeks. So very excited about that. I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I'm going to start with a short story. When my best friend from high school called me this weekend just to check in and they said, you know, how you doing? I said, I have been looking forward to this week more than anything, probably since I've been at Brandon Valley. And I've been, you know, I've had the opportunity to coach the state championship games, but, um, the class of 2020 gets to graduate this weekend. And, um, we're beyond excited to be able to, um, facilitate an in-person ceremony for those who are able to attend. So just, um, want to invite you, obviously as board members, um, to the graduation ceremony. It'll look a little different this year. Um, it's going to be similar to a lot of the things we've done. Um, but we had a couple chorus members that are military. Um, so they're gone, so we, we, uh, wanted- wanted them to be a part of the senior song. We thought that was important, so we pre-recorded that. Our band can't play, but we're working on another little thing that could potentially happen. Really wanted to have an outdoor ceremony, and then the new video board and sound system, which are tied together, hit a little bit of a hiccup. So we are going to be in the Activity Center. Each graduate received four tickets. We'll be under the 50% capacity. I want to assure families and I'll communicate with them that, you know, family that is concerned about social distancing, they won't be seated next to a family, there won't be a family in front of them or directly behind them. We have an extensive plan, extensive safety measures that we're kind of putting in place to ensure that safety, and obviously the graduates will be spread out. Really neat thing, our military grads, we were able to do individual ceremonies for them. So when we call their name, we're going to actually have the video up of them walking across the stage. So lots of neat things that we're doing. If you, as a board member, cannot attend, that's certainly fine. Feel free to email me. I will give you directions. If you could be in the Commons around 1:45, we'll give you directions on exactly how that will work. The presentation of diplomas will obviously be a little different, so we're going to rotate you through. So Renee may give a diploma, and then Mr. Odie would give the next one, and then we'll have that process down. Be pretty simple. We need the stage set up. I need to see some things before we know exactly how that will work. Other than that, the graduation class of 2020 has practice on Friday, and then our Senior Parent Organization has graciously set up an outside barbecue for them. So it's kind of a time for them to let's go through what it looks like for graduation, spend some time together. And an interesting part is, we're going to set up some time for them just to walk the building, and we told them on March 13th that they couldn't return, and most of them haven't been in the building. And obviously, we got construction going on, so there's a lot of areas that are off limits, but certainly some neat things we have planned for them for Friday, too. Other than that, I have nothing. Do you guys have any questions for Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thorson, anything tonight? All right. I think that covers everyone. That takes us to our next item, Board Policy. Proposed first reading for item EEAA District Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As previously discussed, our transportation policy, these tweaks solely reflect those that were previously discussed and presented and communicated, the elimination of that in-district open enrollment eligibility, and then ultimately the centralized stops within our municipalities was already an acceptable practice in accordance to our policy. We just needed to align our practice to our policy. So beyond that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have on the transportation policy. No action is necessary at this time. Formal action will be taken at our next meeting after our second reading. If you have any questions between now and then, feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much. That takes us to General Business Item Number One, Approve the Resolution Allowing Utilization of Distance Learning for the 2021 School Year.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. The administrative recommendation is to approve the utilization of distance learning for the 2021 school year. So the Reader's Digest version is, we want to provide our families flexibility in this time of uncertainty. We understand that there are varying circumstances, whether it be within the household or other concerns that individuals may have. So what we want to do is, we want to provide our families, our BV families, with the ability to opt-in to distance learning. We are asking or mandating that that opt-in would be for one semester. It's really important for us to have a clear vision of what the numbers are so that we can staff it appropriately. We did hire, as you can all remember, approving an K6 distance learning teacher. That was done with our CARES Act funds, understanding that that's where we'll likely see a large number or potentially a large number of students that utilize distance learning. With that being said, we are offering distance learning for all students JK through grades 12 if the parents choose to opt-in. For those in the audience, right now, our opt-in timeline will be July 17th through July 31st, and then we will evaluate our distance learning rostership and make staffing decisions accordingly. So if you were thinking about this from a superintendent's perspective, I would tell you that if we have 10 elementary kiddos opt-in to distance learning, we have the individual that's going to staff that, and they will take care of those 10 kiddos for Semester One. If we have 200 kids opt-in to distance learning, grades JK through 6, there are going to be some staffing assignments and transfers that we will have to manage as we move into August, which is why when folks wonder about, when do I learn who my teacher is, those staffing decisions and whatnot have to happen prior to the release of teacher assignment and those types of things. So ultimately, the resolution allows the utilization of distance learning for parents in the event that they choose to opt-in. It also authorizes the administration to develop regulations, processes, and rules as necessary to manage and administer the distance learning program. Certainly recommend approval.
So appreciate that we have the distance learning platform. It was successful in what we were laid out for Semester Four, and I think when on the website where they'll opt-in, there'll be some things that'll be laid out if I understand correctly, but just to make sure I am correct, Semester One will be, I don't know what the best word for it, is a little bit more rigorous than Semester Four was. I just want to make sure that I'm correct with that because we want to make sure our at-home students are keeping pace with our in-classroom students. We want to make sure that we're balancing all of our students, making sure that we can keep them on pace. So for those that are making a decision, which we respect every decision that is made, we want to make sure that that is done for what is best for each family, each student, each parent, each guardian, but that's something to keep in mind, that what is done at home might be a little bit more amplified than what was done in Semester Four. Also, we don't know the ratios of teachers. It won't be probably the one-on-one teacher-to-classroom, most likely will not be, and they may not have a dedicated class-per-class assigned teacher as well. So that's something to keep in mind.
Yeah. I think a really important thing in terms of distance learning to note is, when you think about JK6 distance learning, it's power standards. So it's the power standards that must be taught. If you were to think about it like in JK6 world, JK6 world, it is the framework, it is the skeleton, and then the classroom, when you think about the amount of time you spend inside the school, that puts all the meat on the bones, for lack of a better phrase. So it will be more rigorous, undoubtedly, than it was in Quarter Four. With that being said, our elementary schools JK through 6th grade will all utilize the distance learning plan standards and curriculum that has been developed as we move through Semester One, and that is strategic in the event that you have to shift to distance learning after one month or after two months. If you have to pivot to distance learning, you're going to be aligned as far as standards go, you're going to be aligned as far as content goes. That is that specifically. I will tell you, grades 7 through 12 for distance learning, we will very likely utilize an online or a digital software platform, and then we will have school personnel support our kids. I say that, edgenuity is in our CARES budget. It's an online curriculum. We utilize it at the high school currently. With that being said, if you have a large percentage of high school students that opt-in to distance learning and we are able to staff it with an in-house teacher, we may utilize that approach as well. At this point in time, we are trying to make three different plans, and then we'll utilize the plan that best meets that circumstance. We have a real strong idea on what it looks like JK6, as far as what we're using and how we're going to use it. Grades 7 through 12, it'll be a little more dependent on numbers, but there very likely will be an online software component in addition to school personnel supports.
Question? Is that loud? I'm sorry. I don't know the rules. So what happens when classes have to be quarantined for two weeks because someone in their class has COVID and if we don't have masks? Like, do those people do distance learning for two to four weeks until they all recover? How does that work? And especially if you're going to have individual plans from 7th to 12th grade, because that's going to happen.
So Madam Chair, what I will say is that when we think about our distance learning plan specifically in the elementary schools, in the event that we have to pivot because we have Mr. Larson's class has a positive COVID case and enough exposures, the Department of Health will communicate with us and make a recommendation on, you need to close this class for two weeks. They are going to be quarantined. That class in and of itself would pivot to distance learning. Mr. Larson would utilize the previously established online platforms, meaning Seesaw for elementary and Zoom to deliver that type of instruction, et cetera, and we are going to have the ability to pivot in and out if we have to. And again, we did that strategically because we want to have the ability to be synchronous. When I get with our back-to-school planning group, this is what I ask them to think about. When you think about Fall 2020, think synchronous and agile. And the reason I say that is because they have to be aligned, and then we also have to be able to go in and out potentially based on the unknowns. So that's how JK6 will be able to pivot in and out. Grades 7 through 12, if you have an individual utilize distance learning, they are going to be on the distance learning platform, and they're going to have their personalized support with their staff member, and they're not, whether we are open or closed, they are what they are, grades 7 through 12. They will continue to move with their software, their platform, et cetera. In the event that your high school, for example, has to close, then your onsite high school kids will pivot to distance learning, and that will look much like it did in fourth quarter in terms of, I shouldn't say much like, all staff will utilize Google Classroom. Okay? So that's the platform that all staff will use. Again, Zoom, the various strategies that they used in Quarter Four as far as when they have to pivot. So grades 7 through 12, if you have a group of kiddos, for example, let's say one kiddo in biology class, they're onsite. One kiddo is quarantined for 14 days because of an exposure not in the school building. Our teaching staff now have the responsibility to provide that kiddo with instruction at home, just like they would if they broke their leg and stayed home for two weeks, or that type of thing. If we have large groups, we'll pivot out of that into our distance learning platform.
I would make a motion then to approve, or is it after the second one? Sorry.
No. Approved resolution allowing utilization of distance learning for the 2021 school year. We announced it at our last meeting. I'm passionate about giving our parents the ability to make a choice for them and still provide those educational services.
So I stick with my resolution to make a motion.
You betcha.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item Number Two, Brandon Valley School District Return to School Fall of 2020.
All right. Thank you very much. I will tell you, this was put together in short order, so forgive its real basic nature. I want to provide you with an overview of the Return to School Fall 2020 survey results. The survey instrument was distributed to Brandon Valley School District's families, staff, and community. It was made available through our school messenger system, which is ultimately our communication for when it snows and we have to do something. That's that same platform. That's how it was distributed. We utilized phone and email notifications, and in addition to that, it was in our legal newspaper within the superintendent's column. There were 3,506 respondents, which at this point in time, I would tell you, that's a nice sample size in terms of your population. So what we did is, we asked individuals to gauge their agreement or disagreement thereof on potential return-to-school strategies. The first strategy that was asked about was traditional, the traditional school day, the traditional school calendar and schedule. It was noted within the survey that physical distancing in this setting can be very challenging at times. So that is the first strategy that we asked individuals to look at. The average response was a 3.9, so very close to that agree statement. I have not yet had the ability to run the statistical analysis on it with a 95% confidence interval. With your sample size, you're probably going to only see it look like a range of a tenth, is my guess. So I'm going to tell you, with 95% confidence, I can tell you that your general public feels it's 3.8 to 4.0. It's probably about where that would be because the sample size was so great. If you moved up to a 99% confidence interval, obviously, it'll just get a little bit wider. You know, maybe it'd be 3.8 to 4.1 or 3.7 to 4.1, something like that, but I've not had the ability to do that analysis yet. Just know that the average response is 3.9 on traditional. When looking at the AABB schedule, 2.4 was the average response. I would note that when we think about the AAB schedule, one of the greatest benefits to the AAB schedule is if you have kiddos Monday, Tuesday, you take Wednesday off. Thursday, Friday, you have the ability for additional cleaning, disinfecting, that type of thing. With that being said, the level of agreement within the respondents was not high, 2.4. Half-days, the potential return-to-school strategy of half-days, excuse me, the average response was a 2.3. Again, when we talk about half-days, what's the real benefit to half-days? Much like the AAB days, you reduce your population size by half, allowing for more ample physical distancing. That's the general concept behind the splitting up the population. But as you can see, 2.3 was the level of agreeance, or disagreeance, I should say. Potential return-to-school strategy, distance learning, asked our respondents to provide us with that information. Average response was a 1.76, so disagree to strongly disagree. Option to utilize distance learning. This was more just a temperature check to get an idea or a feel for what we may be looking at in terms of individuals who would look to opt-in to distance learning for Semester One of the 2020-21 school year. 18% of respondents indicated they would plan on utilizing distance learning. 82% of respondents indicated they would not utilize distance learning. Now, I think it's important to note that when we disseminate our information on Friday, we will have traditional school day, like some verbiage, some language explaining what that looks like and what that is, and how that may look a little different than what they're used to, and then also an overview of what distance learning will look like, what the expectation is, those types of things. We're in the process of completing that work now. So in addition to that, we'll have a brief video overview so parents can get a feel for which of those they feel most comfortable with, but parents will have, obviously, that ability to utilize distance learning. So preferred masking strategy, we did ask the respective masking strategy question. I will tell you that this question was randomized within the survey, so recommended or mandated when you answered the question, flip-flopped around depending on what number you were. It was not one above the other, so just an item to note that that was randomized. Approximately 24%, 24.33% supported mandatory cloth face coverings, whereas 75.67% supported recommended cloth face coverings. I would note, just for the sake of a visual, I did provide a pie graph on what that looks like. Obviously, the red is the recommended. Obviously, the red is the recommended, the support for recommended, and the black is the support for mandatory masking. So generalized survey information, again, I apologize, didn't have the ability to run the statistical analysis on the 95% or 99% confidence interval to give you those ranges. But I can tell you again, add a tenth or two on each side, and that's about what you're going to get in terms of when that analysis is run. The preferred return to school strategy is traditional school days. Pretty overwhelmingly so. I would note, the preferred masking strategy is recommended masking with 75% and change supporting recommended masking, 24% support mandated masking. Preliminary information indicates 15% to 20% may opt into distance learning. I can't tell you where exactly we'll fall in that because that may change based on what parents see as far as an overview, knowing what it will be or how it will be once we have that communication with them. But that's the preliminary information. If it is, you know, if it is 10%, let's say you're going to be looking at 450 kids. If it is 20%, you're looking at about 900 kids. So that's just some high-level math if you were to think about what that exactly would look like as far as opting into distance learning. But that really is, the number of those kids weighs on administration for the creation of staffing schedules and managing it appropriately. It does not have any impact on the fact that we need to provide our families an opportunity to opt into distance learning if it's best for their situation for this next school With that, I would certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
I appreciate the survey, as well as everybody's comments. I know the survey went out to parents. It was obviously public staff, so we gathered for all those that wanted to make input. I think something to keep in mind, that everybody sitting up here, all of the administration and staff is doing everything that we can to gather information. We're tasked with providing education at the highest level possible, but also balancing out safety. And it's not been an easy task. I know we've all been reading and attending webinars. I've been on the state level, so has Dr. Larson. And everything varies greatly. And I'm sure everyone can agree that we can read as many studies and articles. And based on our own experiences, every family, every person has experiences and beliefs that will form and, I guess, put us on various sides of the argument. And we can find things to support that. And that's what makes this decision difficult. The other thing is, is that this virus has a lot of unknowns, and it's shaping and it's changing. It's not something necessarily to be feared, but it's something to respect. And that's what I've been trying to tell people. We need to respect the virus because we just don't know what it'll do. I guess something I want to put forward is something that Brandon Valley has always had, and I think the reason for the Brandon Valley's success is the community. And no matter what decision is made, I think what we would ask is for community support, and that's where we come together. So no matter where you stand and what you want to happen, that what decision is made is that we ask that we all come together. No matter what we try to voice out, whether it's passive, I say passive posting, that's maybe not the best thing to do, is active involvement. So if it's for masks, we make masks for the kiddos that they actually want to wear and hold on to, and that they enjoy wearing. If you feel comfortable in the classroom, sign up to be a sub, to be a teacher, to drive a bus. We need those things. So that's how we get past the actively involved and come-together's community, because that's what we need. And that's how Brandon Valley, as a community, will get way ahead of all the other communities that are still trying to figure it out, navigate that. So I promise you, and I know that I'm speaking for everybody up here, no matter the decision that's made, Dr. Larson says that it's the best/worst decision because it's just what we have to deal with. Education is more than math and reading and science. There's also emotional well-being that we're dealing with, and we know that there's all sides of this. But we want to get kids the best education so that we're not paying for the delays year after year. Like, we're trying the best that we can. Distance learning, we built the best platform that we can, but we know that even distance learning is not probably the best. I mean, we got all the comments, like everybody was hailing all teachers, as they should, but they couldn't wait to get them back in front of their teachers. So the staff has been phenomenal. I mean, we're hailing our staff and our teachers. So we're just asking that you trust us. We're asking, again, that we all just link arms and come together, no matter what side we're on on this. Because no matter how much we yell and fight and throw stones, you're not going to change somebody's opinion. And that we ask that we just understand that we all come from just different angles. There's reasons that maybe we can't wear a mask. There's reasons that we have to wear a mask. There's reasons that we just don't understand at face value. So that's, I just want to put those things out there before I made the motion. Based on the input, I would make the motion that we return to a traditional day of school for the academic calendar with recommended masking.
Dr. Larson, before we, I guess we have to...
There's been a first and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board?
I have a couple of questions, actually. Dr. Larson, if you opt in, so if we go traditional and we go opt-in, and we're at 15% or 10% or whatever that percent is, the reality of one staff member isn't going to be enough, clearly. If those numbers are even close, it's a number of staff members. We have a contractual arrangement with our staff, but that is in regard to if we were going to release somebody. So the conversation around how do we determine, for example, let's just stay in the elementary for now, because maybe it's easier to understand the term of grades, grade levels. How are we going to determine which third-grade teachers are going to leave the classroom and go to distance? Because we actually have two constituencies here. We have the constituency of the children that come into this building that we need, the buildings, and we need to serve them and should serve them, and that's what a school district does. But we're also an employer. And so we have the constituency of employees. And in the traditional, not trying to get real long here, but trying to explain the situation and get to the question, in the traditional setting of riffing somebody, it's always seniority and whatever. But we're not riffing somebody.
No.
We're changing their assignment. So if you have a teacher that has a potential health condition, for instance, but hasn't been here necessarily, you know, I mean, what's the... A protocol that's set up to say, you know what, doesn't matter, this person's been here longer, or this person hasn't been here as long, the person that most gets this is because, you know what I'm asking?
I can give you a very, very clear, short, and quick answer.
Thank you.
Number one, when we know what we need as far as distance learning staff, we will ask our staff if there are any volunteers. And we will also, at that point in time, evaluate those transfer requests. The bullet point directly below that is assignment is an administrative function. Clearly outlined in the master contract, that Mr. Larson is a teacher in the school district. He's not a third-grade teacher at Brandon Elementary. He's not a second-grade teacher at RB. He teaches for us where we tell them to.
Provided they're certified in that area.
Yes, correct. So, long story short, one, seek volunteers so that hopefully we could accommodate any of those concerns or issues that a staff member with an underlying health condition may have. And then the second bullet point becomes, assignment is an administrative function, and that function would take place through my office with building-level feedback and input into how we manage that.
Yep. I mean, I think that's important, for that to be verbalized so that people hear that and understand what that process is like. Because, again, we provide education for students, but we also provide employment for people. And those are two very, they're not competing things, but they happen in conjunction. And we have a responsibility to both groups. And I think it's also important for people to know that the BVEA, the Education Association, has been invited and has participated
Correct.
...in all steps of this process. So this isn't a board-run thing or an administrator-only-run thing. And that has been, again, I've been in this district for a long time, has been practiced to involve the BVA in any of these major kinds of conversations. So they have had that opportunity to participate. Members have, you know, and they have their leadership team, and those people have been in place, many of them, for a long time. So it's not simply our administrators who have said, this is what we recommend. It is with input from the staff as well. Question, our non-certified staff, input from them as well. Not aware of that, I can't remember.
Correct. So our classified staff is represented. There is a representative on that group. It is our school nurse, our school nurse liaison who is representative of...
From your council.
Of that council, yes. It is the liaison from that group.
Logical choice.
Yep.
Logical choice. Staff, is there a disconnect between what those two groups want?
At this point in time, I would say I have not heard any real disconnect between the classified member, who is a school nurse, and the BVA representative about the table.
No, I'm sorry, no, any disconnect between what you perceive as what the staff wants and what the community may want, being if that is what we're going to use as our data, in other words, 75%, 25% on this, and 4.3, or, excuse me, but, you know, 4.3 on this, I mean, you feel that it's probably fairly similar across the board?
I would not and cannot make that assumption. I can tell you that the reason that I disseminated the survey to a holistic group is because I did not want it to be divisive in terms of, I'll give you an example.
Thank you.
And this might not be real, but I'll give you an example. If 100% of your staff said they wanted distance learning in the fall, and ranked, and 100% of your staff said traditional learning 1, 1, and your community said traditional learning 4, that places us in a very challenging position in terms of which side or who are you going to necessarily agree with, as you have talked so clearly about, in terms of you have to service students and educate kids. So what I did is I compiled it together to give us an overall feel for what all of our school district community feels.
And again, I'm just, I'm not always, in this case, asking questions, but I think sometimes publicly talking about or answering these things, whatever. If the motion that Member Saxor is making is approved, any, obviously, any teacher that wants to wear a mask can wear a mask, you know, and obviously any student can, that wants to. But a teacher is not going to be able to mandate in their room that their kids are all going to wear it in their room. I mean, we have to understand that the word, as a longtime building administrator, the word mandatory is a challenge.
So can I?
Please.
So I feel comfortable making the motion based on, obviously, a survey of a generalized large community that went to all the staff. But also, I've been contacted by community members, as well as many teachers from multiple buildings. And I would tell you that those teachers, as just being someone that listens, echo what these survey results show, talking to even teachers in other districts that have similar to these results. No, they can't mandate. They will take the precautions that they feel that they, you know, whether it's a mask or not mask. They want to model for their students, you know, if I wear a mask, maybe they will. Some will say, maybe I'll make them and hand them out to my class. Maybe I'll volunteer to take them home and wash them for them. They'll take different precautions as they feel necessary. But I think overwhelming, many of them have stated they want to get back in the classroom traditionally. I didn't have one teacher reach out and ask for mandated, to be quite honest with you. They all stated that they would take precautions to protect themselves as they felt necessary. And if they felt that they wanted their students to do more, that they would take the extra efforts, just like offering, like they do now. They'll purchase more wipes, like they do, or they'll, you know, they'll work in more hand-washing, you know, steps if they need to. But that's what I, that's why I feel confident in making the motion that I did.
Sometimes when things are, when the gravity of things are as great as they are, in this particular case, in my time as an administrator, I knew that sometimes going by a public opinion poll or survey, might not always be, the popular decision might not always be the best decision. So I'm a little leery of numbers sometimes in that regard. We can certainly fall back on and say that we have done what a majority of the people in the public or of the survey recommended that we do. We certainly, you know, the motion would do that. But I worry about ultimately the health of our employees. And I mean, I'll be honest, I don't believe that we'll have anything close to a regular school year again. I think we're going to see a mess throughout the course of the year because it just is what it is. I mean, I think it's so unpredictable and whatever, and I think we can only do the best that we can. But I have a concern about not erring on the side of caution when it may save some people's lives. That's just me. So, anyway.
As someone who's lived it, you don't want it. As someone who has immunocompromised family, you do what you have to do around those people. Personally, I think it comes down to parents and students need to discuss it amongst themselves. What are we going to do? What is my expectation of a parent? Was my expectation as a parent? What do I expect you to do? Might be the ultimate lesson in don't follow your peers. Do I always wear my mask? No. I have to be honest. I don't. I get in my office at work, nearest person next to me is across the room. When everybody else comes back, I might have to wear it all day long. Am I going to be happy? Not particularly. When I work ED, I'm in it all the time, 14, 15 hours. Not fun. Not great. When you're claustrophobic, you find out you actually do like a papper. I just want everyone to know, this is probably the most awkward time we have had in our country, and I just want us all to give one another a little bit of grace. So if there is no further discussion on the motion, there has been a motion, and there has been a second. Rule call, vote, Mr. Lombard.
Saxor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Telkot.
No.
Odie.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to General Business Items number 1 through 18. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel Items 1 through 12, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Items 13 or 15 are transfers or information only. Building permits, there are a number of those for your review if you'd like to see those. There's a thank-you note from Gaye Anderson for supporting her for her various roles in SNA. I think she may have sent you all a little video ditty thanking you for the two years that she's been able to be the SNA president, which is all... that she's been able to be the SNA president, which has also reaped benefits for our school district as well. Any formal board reports tonight that anyone has tonight? Just a notification, I do need to let you know that alternative education, due to scheduling conflicts, will now be on the third Tuesday of the month at 5:00 PM, and we'll be doing Zoom meetings until otherwise noted.
The Executive Director Board will be, has rescheduled slightly, will be meeting on August 7th, and it will be now a live meeting in Pier, and I will report back once we complete.
Mr. Ody, did you have anything?
Nothing.
All right. With that, that takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain, yes?
[inaudible]
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for all of your input. We appreciate it.